This is a regular scheduled Select Board meeting of the Dalton Select Board. We're in the Callahan Room of the Dalton Town Hall, 7:00 PM on February 11th, 2019. For all those who are able and who wish, would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Boyle, would you lead us now?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nancy, could we have the roll call, please?
Mark Stroh.
Here.
Robert Bishop.
He, uh, he's ill.
John Bartels.
Here.
And Hollup.
Here.
And Robert Boyle.
It's Josh.
John Boyle, I'm sorry.
That's right.
And Ken Ballack.
Here. Okay. We had scheduled to approve minutes of February 4th, but they're still in the works, so we'll put that off until the next meeting, which will be the 25th. Now, this is the public address to the Board. This is a time when the public may address the Board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the Board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company or institution you represent. The public address to the Board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the Board Chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the Chair or their designee. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the Board, please make the request at this time. This request may be granted by the Board Chair. Would anyone wish to address the Board at this time? Okay. Thank you. So, uh, first item, item six, is an appointment for the Assistant Animal Patrol Officer. Excuse me. And I'll read from a memorandum from Mr. Walto, our Town Manager, to us, the Select Board. Says, "I hereby recommend for your ratification the appointment of Gregory M. Elser of 187 Curtis Ave, Dalton, to the position of Assistant Animal Control Officer for an initial term to expire on June 30th, 2019. Mr. Elser is the owner, operator of Elser Animal Control, holding a problem animal control license in Massachusetts. He is also licensed to carry firearms, which is a requirement for animal control officers. Mr. Elser is an active member of the Army National Guard, having attained the rank of Sergeant. If confirmed, it is Chief Coe's intention to have Mr. Elser attend the next Municipal Animal Control Officers Academy training in March. Chief Coe's recommendation and Mr. Elser's employment application are enclosed for your further information. Thank you for consideration of this appointment." Mr. Elser couldn't attend tonight, but Chief Coe is here if there's some comments that you would like to make before we go ahead with the appointment.
Greg was one of five applicants. He had the most experience being with that problem animal control certification. Just to be clear, an animal control officer for the municipality is different than a problem animal control. The job, task, and responsibilities do not overlap, so his certification shows that he's experienced with dealing with wild animals and has the aptitude for it. However, the animal patrol officer is pretty much limited to domestic animals and only those wild animals that pose a public, immediate public threat for either acting aggressively or suspected rabies. Other than that, the animal patrol officer has zero authority over wild animals. So, I just wanted to make that clear, that his one job, or his certification in his full-time job does not account for the certification that will be required of animal control, which is a state mandatory 12-week, or 12-day program that he has to take.
Is that all at once, or is it like weekends or something?
It's 12 Fridays, eight hours on each Friday he's able to attend that. And the only one given is once a year in Boylston, so there's some sort of commute. Once a year in Boylston.
That is a commute.
We have been told that we have a seat in that academy, so we got confirmation that we're in this academy that starts in March.
Okay. Thanks. Any questions for the Chief before we continue?
I have any questions. Well, who pays for the training, Chief?
Uh, we will. It's a $500, I believe it's approximately $500 to get in, and then we'll be paying minimum wage for him to attend. Um, and then, once he's done, he'll start his duties as Assistant ACO.
Okay. Just one other question. Goodness, paying for the training. Uh, will Mr. Elser continue to operate and own his business while he's an employee of the town?
He is. That's his full-time employment. This is a part-time position. I have a call into the Ethics Commission, asking for some guidance on how to delineate the business from his duties. Again, the duties performed as an animal control officer are extremely different from a PAC officer. If you call to have a skunk or raccoon removed from your property, the animal control officer does not do that for the town of Dalton. It's not in his authority. You'd have to call a PAC agent. So, I have a, a call into the Ethics Commission, and I expect an answer within 48 hours. He will have to file a financial interest disclosure to the town through Ken, and then, based on whatever recommendation I get from the Ethics Committee is what I'll inform Town Manager of, and he'll have to reply to that disclosure on how to proceed in the future. But it will be in line with whatever the Ethics Commission tells us.
Just to note that although at this point in time, this is a part-time job, I'm sure the plan is to, in not-too-distant future, be elevated to full-time status.
That's an option, and whatever answer it is for a part-time position per diem, it would be the same for a 20-hour position, even though it's considered full-time. It is a 20-hour position, so I think we would understand what it's really, even though it carries benefits, it's really a part-time position either way, and, you know, he would, I would assume, be expected to be able to make an income. But again, the Ethics Commission will steer us on that.
One final question. Our current animal control officer is also a dispatcher. Does Mr. Elser have any plans to become a dispatcher also?
Uh, it has not been part of the plan. We're just simply looking to get him installed as an assistant, get him trained, and go from there. We'll make determinations in the future.
Thanks, Chief.
Anyone else?
I have a motion, please.
I make a motion. We appoint Gregory Elser of 187 Curtis Ave to the position of Assistant Animal Control Officer for initial term to expire on June 30th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made. Second, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Repose? Extentions? Thank you, Chief. Next, we have a request for an extension from Mr. Lindbergh, who is here today for a junk car, or junk vehicle, I should say. And as you see in your packet, there's a lengthy letter. I'm not going to read the whole letter, but in summary, this is a field tractor in question that he uses to mow the field, or cut the field or area behind his house. Mr. Lindbergh, you can butt in anytime you want to. I'm trying to give this explanation. I'll just try to paraphrase what you say here. And some of the material that's there that was requested to be moved is actually attachments for this tractor, but some is not. Am I correct in that? That you're requesting the extension so that when things aren't frozen and you can get at it, you can remove those items? So, in a nutshell, that's the request that we got from Mr. Lindbergh, and Fred, if you'd like to add anything, go ahead.
I don't know if you can even register a tractor. And before I got the notice, I did inform her that the tractor does run.
Mm-hmm.
And I take the seat off. The seat just sets on the tractor. I bring it into the cellar, so it's not exposed to the weather in the winter. And I also take the battery out, bring it in the garage, and charge it up in the winter. Then I put it back in the spring, and it will either start with the cape, or you can crank-start it.
Yeah.
But it does run.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. Lindbergh on this, or any comments in regard to it? I don't particularly see a problem, and one of the things that Chief Coe has always told us, that a person's staying, trying to stay in compliance is what our goal is here, and this obviously is something that you want to do. It seems reasonable to me.
I'll make a motion. We grant a 180-day extension to Mr. Lindbergh.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. The motions are made. Second, is there further discussion or questions?
Does the Chief want to say something?
If this is in working order, it's exempt from the bylaws. Correct? You can't, you can't register a farm equipment, but it can become junk. And if he's gonna attest at a public meeting to the Board that it's in running condition, that's sufficient for me. We just are told that often, and we're dealing with a couple other properties with tractor equipment that is arguable if it's running or not. And in the goal of fairness, we issued the warning to start these dialogues. So, as far as the tractor and the attachments for that working tractor, you can deem them exempt, and I'll notate it moving forward that we just follow up on the other articles.
I didn't go, I didn't go by the property, so I don't know what the other things are up there.
These articles are not viewable from the property.
Okay.
We are invited on.
You mean from the road?
We are invited onto the property, and that's when it was discovered.
Okay. All right. Any comments or questions for anyone? Okay. Motion's been made. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Extentions? Thank you. We have budget reviews at this point in time. We have several department heads here with us, so we'll attack these in order, do the department, department heads first, and then we'll get to the other ones, if that's okay with you, Ken.
That's what we should do.
Okay. So, and we'll skip the.
We'll skip that until the end.
Until the end. All right. So, the first one numerically would be Town Clerk, 161 Elections, 162, and 163 Registarians. And we have our Town Clerk here, Deborah Mary, to help explain anything that you may, you may want, and I'll hand this off to Ken or to Deb or whatever.
Before we begin, I found a bad number on 162 Elections, so I brought you a revise of that top sheet.
Okay.
And I've written revise, so we're able to know the chance we'll check on there.
Thank you.
Hey.
You're welcome. Okay. Well, why don't we start with the regular budget, 161?
Yeah.
And...
Okay. You'll see that 161 is up by 2.9% on salaries. That really counts for the 2% coal increase, plus residuals from steps that have happened in the prior year.
Mm-hmm.
Was an additional $50 requested for expenses, and that's really a definite one to add on Town Clerk's budget.
Pretty straightforward, just 2%.
Just, just went up on dog licensing supplies, huh?
Um, yes. Is they got?
All right.
TA.
Okay. TA?
Next budget is Elections, and you received the revised copy, and the revision is in the first line item for expenses, equipment reprogramming and maintenance, that we don't expect it to go down by that much. It varies with the amount of Elections. Next year, we'll have two Elections, and the voting machines have to be reprogrammed. Expect those to be the new machines, so we don't know yet how much the reprogramming expense will be. And we show a 2% increase in the salaries. And I want to point out to you, Town Clerk is suggesting or recommending, if you go to the third page in your handout, you'll see the Election Budget with different numbers for salaries. And that's because, if you look at the final page, you'll see that she did a bit of a salary survey for those positions in Elections, Warden, Assistant Warden, tabulators, checkers, tellers, and so forth, and feels that we are well below comparable towns, and you can see the numbers there. So, she requested my permission to put, to recommend an alternate budget, showing you what it would look like if you chose to increase those salaries. You can see the difference if you look between the 162 that you have with the 2%, the $6,100 for salaries, and it's $6,400, almost $6,500, if we increase those salaries as recommended.
The increase is...
Commensurate with minimum wage?
Um, it's, some of it is still a dollar lower than the minimum wage, but most of it is at or above.
You're proposing? Pay less than minimum wage?
We pay at a different, we don't pay at the federal level, let me see if I say this. We pay at the federal level, not the state level.
We're bound to pay according to the federal minimum wage, and that's...
Oh, okay. Not the state. Thank you.
The difference, that's $300, correct? Correct, thereabouts?
Yeah. That's what it looks like.
Yeah. I'd be inclined to go with the new budget.
That would be too, it puts us in line, then it puts it in line with the state minimum wage. Is that what it does? No?
Yes.
It does. The state minimum wage is what, 12, or gonna be 12?
Yeah.
Or it's a little higher than 12?
I think it's a little higher. I think it's going to 13, but I'm not sure. And then it's eventually supposed to go to 15.
Yeah. I kind of agree with Mr. Stroh on this, to try to stay in line with the, although we don't have to, try to stay in line with the state minimum wage. Any comments? Further comments? So, um, how do you want to do this? TA the new budget?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Budget is headed minimum wage, local comparisons, it's...
Yes.
...so you'll adopt that one, and then if that will go on to the Finance Committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next budget is the Registarians, Voters. You can see we also have the 2% increase, and an increase in expenses of $400. That's in the census service vendor, and likewise, Town Clerk is recommending that we use the same minimum wage comparison, so the third page in is the Registarians with the higher wages, using the same wage scale that Debbie had used for the Elections. And you can see in this instance, makes about a, it's a, it's about a $600 difference.
I'm kind of confused with the hours and the...
See, if you look at for the vote...
I'm looking at the, the, your new, yeah, the minimum wage and comparable sheet, which I guess is actually the same as the other one, as for hours and with the rate of pay. So, it's a, can you explain what the difference is between these positions? And you have a Supervisor. Is that you?
Supervisor of Elections, yes.
Okay. And then the, the second line down, 114?
Okay.
What is, I don't understand, understand that one, what it is. Are those, um, is that?
The hours.
The hours for the people that are the Registarians?
The Registarians themselves.
The Registarians themselves.
And those are special voter registrations, that kind of stuff, which were mandated to hold?
Every, so many weeks prior to an election?
So many days prior to an election or a Town Meeting.
Okay.
And they're 11-hour sessions.
Okay. And they're usually on a Friday or Saturday or something like that? Is that what they're doing?
Hate it. No. Not always, but often on a Friday.
Yeah. Okay.
Sometimes they're in the evening as well.
Okay.
Yeah. They go from 8:00 in the morning until, excuse me, 9:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night.
Other questions or comments?
Just one quick question, yeah. Madam Clerk, do you expect to have a special Registrar session due to the pending referendum issue before the Central Berkshire Regional School District Towns?
Were required to, yes.
Thank you. Is that provided for in this year's budget?
Um, not in this budget.
No, this is next year's, yeah.
No, but Central Berkshire pays us for running the Elections.
So, they pay for the Registrar session?
Whatever we have expended, they will reimburse us for that.
Great. Thank you.
Further questions? Okay. So, what's your pleasure to TA the minimum wages and comparable to stay in line with the last one?
Yes. The next budget we'll do is 222 Communications.
Deb, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you find that your package, he is here. And this budget has seen a significant increase in state aid. Remember, we get a significant amount of state aid because we have a regional communication system with Inzdale and Windsor participating, and now since we take on wireless 911 calls, our, for the first time in many years, the state aid has been increased 145,000 this current fiscal year, moving to 152,000 in the next fiscal year. Then we have a Director, and then three full-time dispatchers on a rotating four-and-two schedule with five reserves. Nothing has changed in that department in terms of the head count. The, again, due to steps, but the salaries are up by 3%, and expenses are gonna be up by 2%. You can see below with maintenance of the radio particularly. Anything you'd like to add to that, Gabby?
Nope. The only increase again is I have one dispatcher completing 10 years at the end of this year, this fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
Another dispatcher that's completing is five years at the beginning of next fiscal year, so they'll both go up a step, and we have a slight increase in the Motorola Service Agreement, which provides us 24-hour access if for some, some reason our radio systems go down.
Okay. Chief? Questions or, are we good? Okay. TA? Thank you.
Thank you, Gabby. Okay. Next, we have Police Department and the Associated Police Department Caucus, which is the Animal Control, Animal Inspector. And this evening, we have Sergeant Furlong, about Chief Coe as a, as a training exercise. He worked out his budget and presented it to me with Chief Coe, and is here this evening to also present. And this is one of the most complicated budgets we have, so I don't heavy him that task. You'll see that wages overall are up by 3%, $26,000. Expenses are up very minimally, 2% by $1,900, and that's in Police, 210. Anything you'd like to add, Sergeant?
Yeah, good, thank you. Here you go, gentlemen. So, if you look at first page on the salary, you can see where as we assumed a 2% wage increase for union and non-union employees, we did have four officers that gained a step increase during the fiscal year. So, you have one officer going step three to a step four, and then three officers will go step two to step three, which runs us, you know, to that 3% plus, it's a, we got 3.11% raise in salaries, about 2% projection.
So, you included the 2% already with the contractual employees on this?
Yes.
Okay.
2% across the board for them.
Okay. So, I don't remember. When, when something, when a contract is, is up, it doesn't go into effect, or we're working off the old contract into the next fiscal year, have we given the, done the 2% raise anyways, or?
Typically, we level fund center the salaries of the union personnel. In this instance, the Chief has put 2% raises here. Doesn't mean the union's gonna settle for 2%.
Right.
What it means is in the end that if we need to make an adjustment, it will be a less, a lesser adjustment, because we already have 2% built in. If the union settles for 2%, or if they settle for less.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. If they settle for less, then whatever's left over at the end of the year...
Goes to free cash.
Goes into free cash, right? Okay. All right. Now, that was my only, only question.
Chief or Sergeant, I see in here for in-service training. What about outside training, other than all, where does that come from?
We're on the expense page, yeah.
Yeah. Just saying, I'm looking at both pages.
We have sal, we have salary for, for training, and then we have expense, which I believe, if you're asking about outside contractors?
Right. It's also going in separate trainings and stuff like that, which is...
So, we have a salary in which we pay our officers, which is the front page, which is what, you know, what they get paid when they're at a training, whether it's in-house or out-of-house.
Right.
And then on the expense page, we have a, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
We also have a line in the expense to pay for outside training.
I just wonder what line is it? Oh, I see a question on second quarter.
Yes, I'm sorry. Line three.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't see anything kind of the ordinary on this. I'd be inclined to TA it unless there's further discussion there.
Just one observation. The departure from past procedure of putting a financial amount in the Salary Department when it hasn't been negotiated yet gives the implication that our minimum is 2%. I don't think this conduces to good collective bargaining.
Yeah. I think it was the Chief's feeling that he wanted, wanted to minimize this, well, this fee for himself, but just the disruption in adjusting his budget. But the DPOU could, could take that as an indication that we're willing to go to 2%, but we, we did, we did allow for an increase of our non-union employees by 2%, which is why I authorized it to be put in here.
Yeah. I, I can understand where you're coming from, it just, just makes your bookkeeping easier, and it can be taken out as well as it can be put in, too.
I mean, we can, we can level fund this budget, if that you...
If, if in fact you needed to do a reserve fund transfer at the end of the next fiscal year because it wasn't put in this fiscal, or now, before we enter that fiscal year, it could take away from other issues that we have to draw from.
I think, if anything, the cat's out of the bag at this point for anything. I think if we leave it and just going forward, we do the budget like the Chief is saying, from now on, that's how we do it. We just budget it that way anyway, so there is no surprise or anything like that. We just do it that way from now on.
I may. For eight years, this is what I've done to try to project myself, how it would have an impact on other lines. Otherwise, I, if there's no contract, I'm simply resubmitting last year's budget, and it's difficult for me to plan, even if we go into the next fiscal year, which we've done, we've gone beyond June 30th.
Well, yeah, I just don't, I just didn't remember it, Chief. You know, I didn't, I didn't think we did. But we have in the past, we have in the past, I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
No, I, I've done it... No, I, I've done it, so whenever the first meeting I meet at a department head meeting and they say, "Non-union is this," that's what I've gone on just to show, otherwise I'd just be submitting last year's budget for the union. There's no change. And many, more times than not, we have gone over the deadline, so I'm working against, there's no point in me being part of this process in the season.
Well...
I can submit the level-funded budget.
Yeah.
I mean, there's...
It wouldn't be level-funded anyways for, for your administrative assistant or for yourself because...
And if I can know, I don't know that you've got a color version, but on ours, all those things that could be affected, we left in red, not knowing the outcome.
Okay.
So on our version, everybody's salary is left in red, including college incentive, knowing that it could change.
Okay.
But my experience is more times than not, we've gone, we've gone beyond this date before I can do a budget. So it's tough for me to plan on other line items. It's not just the salary affects the entire overall budget.
Okay. Further comments or questions?
Well, I might say, does this apply to all bargaining units?
I don't know if, I don't know if that was done with...
To be consistent, but nothing else.
No, my instructions department has worked to level fund where there was no agreed-upon amount except for non-union folks. So the other bargaining units, I expect them to, well, I can ask, yeah, she's not here, she's gone, but I assume that she put that in at the zero increase, but I'm not certain unless I go back and take a look at it. It looks to me like it was put in. It does appear on the communication budget that she... It does appear that that 2% was included. 2%, yes. Included in her calculations. Appears it does. If that were the case...
You've already approved it?
We're seeing that it's already been, well, technically approved. For communications, the instructions for the other contractual unit would be to do the same thing. Highway, it would just be highway. Just highway. Yeah, to do the same thing the communications did, or what we're doing with the police department, or if this is what we're doing with the police department. So, again, I don't have a problem TA'ing this.
I don't have a problem TA'ing it because I look at this, this is what we're predicting. And if we're trying to be proactive here and just budget our money, I think this is the smart move, right?
This is realistic, somewhat real, more realistic in that putting the 2% in.
And the numbers may change, but at least we got the money.
But this is the most realistic right at this moment.
Yeah. Any other comments? TA? Full TA?
TA.
One statement. I have asked, and it's being considered by the union to start negotiations earlier in the last year so that hopefully there can be an agreement now, which we can have a realistic budget. So they have, they have agreed to consider that request on my behalf. I don't know what the status is, but that has been requested to try to avoid this problem moving forward.
Okay. Okay, moving on. We have Animal Inspector and Animal Control. Do them together, is that easier for everyone? They can be done together, remember the Animal Control Officer and Animal Inspector are one and the same. And we just slice a piece of the Animal Control Officer's salary off for the Animal Inspector. It's just one job, paid at one rate. So you can see a slight decline in the ACO officer's salary in the coming fiscal year. We expect a retirement in that department, but there's nothing official yet, which is one of the reasons we want to train an assistant ACO in case the present ACO decides to retire because the assistant position has been vacant for a number of years. On the equipment side of it, we have just an additional $100 on the expenses. And that's about it for that. So salaries went down, Sergeant, you, you prepared this, correct?
Yes, sir.
One of the reasons salaries went down is the vacation replacement was omitted?
Right, so the, military, there you go, throw it out there, it was going to happen. So the assistant ACO is going to the academy this fiscal year?
Yeah.
That's, that money, that $2,500, that was allowed for budget FY '19, so it's no longer needed as a line item in fiscal year '20. So that was removed for fiscal year '20, that $2,500, which is line 292.5120.
Yeah.
And so that's the reason for the marked decline in the total salary is down 14.41%.
I was, I was confused with the breakdown. Not surprisingly, with the, with the ACO salary. The, the grade, okay, I understand, but I don't understand the two, three, and six step, it can...
So those are the town grades for steps? And essentially where the new ACO will begin as a step two, if I remember wrong, they'll proceed as a step three.
Oh, okay, so you have, you have an anniversary date here, pretty much that you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the top portion is the current ACO, projected time for when we believe that he will be present, a total of nine weeks, which accounts for that line item.
Okay. All right, that, now it makes sense, thank you. Anyone else have some questions on this? Anything? TA? Thank you. Thanks, John. Okay, we can go back to regular order, I think. The recording secretary, one, we should start with that, 154, and then followed by Conservation Commission Town Planner, 175, and we have group health and Medicare tax. Recording secretary, see, this is prepared by Judy Wagner along with Sandy Albano. And what we tried to do is look at all the boards that require the services of a recording secretary, and they're paid a flat rate for the meeting. But if meetings go over two and a half hours, then they're paid an overtime rate for the time they're over two and a half hours. Recording secretaries are allowed to do office work for the boards and commissions that they serve. So overall, we expect that to go down slightly in the coming fiscal year just by the operation of the meetings that they will attend. Okay, TA? More questions?
Good.
Thank you. The next is Conservation Commission, which I prepared on behalf of the commission. And that's simply a level-funded budget. Sent it off to the Chair Don Sacco, and he didn't give back to me, so I assume that it's okay to level fund as I look at the expenditure data, which is the second sheet attached, and there didn't seem to be any indication that this budget needed to be increased. Okay. TA? The next budget is Town Planner, 175. Rebecca couldn't be with us this evening, so I told her I would present her budget. And you can see she's a grade eight, step three. Again, it's a little over 2% by operation of the step increase she received in the prior year. And the expenses have been level-funded. Okay, TA? Next, we have group health insurance, and remember I reported to you last week that we got the actual numbers from MIA, and we expected it to be down slightly, and you can see the bottom line, we're down through $3,400, and that's excellent for health insurance to be down instead of up about a half a percent. And you can see the head count here, who is taking what type of insurance. I'm surprised to see we have more retirees than we do have active employees. And we always budget defensively, in this case, by having additional employees for open enrollment, because we don't know who might enroll in health insurance that's eligible and not now registered for health insurance, because they're getting it through their spouses. Okay, TA? Okay. Next, we have the Medicare tax, and it's 1.45% of payroll, and our payroll's some $2.8 million, and we just increased that by 2%. Okay. TA? And finally, we have the schedule. I've been juggling these as we go along, for some reason this year it's particularly difficult with people moving budgets around, but you can see where we are, after we finish tonight, we're going to be approximately halfway through, but we've had, as I think I reported last week, I originally intended to finish up on March 11th, but we're left to move to the 18th because of Tom Accountant, well, be it her annual school, not, meaning she can't prepare all the budgets she normally does until the 18th. And some of those budgets, she works with the treasurer on, so the treasurer's going to move some of her budgets down to the 18th as well. So the next time we meet, we'll have the CBRSD budget, tentative budget will have been approved on the 14th, I believe. So we'll have those numbers as well as the highway budgets, and that'll be a pretty full set of budgets to look at in addition to some smaller ones. Then following that, we'll do the building maintenance budget, that's another set of good-sized budgets, again, finishing up on the 18th. And as I have before, I put all the tentatively approved budgets into the budget worksheet. I did not put the clerks' slightly higher budgets for registrars and elections in, I'll amend this to put that in there, but we do have the, the health insurance budget is in here, 3% for the $3,400 decrease. We are still in, in very, very good shape this fiscal year. Yeah, we just went under 20. Let's see. It's a sale, president's sale. And we may go down further. Right, you're down, you didn't notice that. 1999. Right. And if the tentative budget is approved for CBRSD, that'll go down. Even more. That assessment will go way down. Oh, yeah, this fiscal year will go way down. Yeah. So, so far, it's looking good, but we haven't highway department to put in here yet. You say that with some reservation. I don't know, we got, our debt service is increasing a little bit as well, so those may be seen, but we're still doing very well. Okay. Any questions for Ken? Thank you, sir. So, your updates, any? Chairman, I don't have any particular updates for you this evening, but if anybody has any questions about the projects we're working on, you can be up here trading incident. Any questions?
No.
It's a pretty quiet meeting tonight.
That's okay.
All right. Items for future tenders, I don't have any changes on the, on the list, there will be a couple that we're trying to get for our next meeting, which is February 25th. And that would be for the recognition of volunteers if the fact that's done, and the letter to our state delegation with the FCC ruling. Are there any additions that board members would like to put on here or like seen done? Okay. Remarks from the select board? I bet you there aren't any. Seems pretty low-key tonight. Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything specific. Anybody else? Okay. Which brings us to our announcements. The Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban, which went into effect on November 15th, 2018, and will be in effect until April 15th, 2019. I hold office hours by appointment, and my next office hour at the Senior Center is on February 28th at 4:30 until 6:30. And then after that, it'll be March 28th, same time. But if you wish to make an appointment with me, please call 413-684-6111, extension 11, or my home number, it's 413-684-2526. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street in Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Town Hall, and from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The Green Dalton Committee is looking for new members. If interested, contact the Town Manager's Office at 684-6111, extension 11. I declare that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
I move we go to executive session to conduct a strategy, strategy session in preparation for negotiations with union and non-union personnel, the Highway Association Control Officers, Highway Superintendent, Police Sergeant, Highway Foreman, and litigation DEP administrative consent order. And now return to open session.
I'll second that.
Most has been made and seconded. Roll call vote, Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
We're in recess for a few minutes, thank you.